Mr. Colom?
Yes.
Mr. Serenani?
Here.
Dr. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Billings?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper as in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act imposed as required by law.
Thank you very much. This evening we have quite a busy workshop. I'd like to start with a presentation by Mark Bilt at Long Branch with Dean Marchetto.
Can I turn this on?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, I'm going to begin. My name is Dean Marchetto. I'm the architect for Mark Bilt, working on this project. I'm happy to be back here. This is my first time I've been here in Long Branch. This is the place of some of my most proudest work. For those who don't know my work, this is our first job here in Long Branch. We did Pure Village Phase One. And you can see in this photograph this restaurant as well. So you all know that this is the beginning of the Pure Village project. And we were here from the beginning. And this is -- I'm pleased to be able to come back and bring you another job. So what I have for you tonight is three aspects of a proposal. The first one is a 3D model that we did. And we designed a building for the site. It has seven stories plus an underground parking deck. And the best way to show that to you is in a 3D format in the context. So I'd like to open that. And then we have the floor plans. And I can then show you the materials, which we have boards. So looking at this, this is an overall view, aerial view. Our site is right here, south of Pure Village. It's this site right in here where it's the dents. This is Pure Village right here, so you can see where we are in relationship to Pure Village. If I zoom in, you can see the beach, the boardwalk here, the beach, and of course, the water. And this is our site between Ocean Avenue and Ashen Boulevard. And what I'd like to do now is just tilt this up and then zoom in. So you can see here, we have a building that steps off of the dunes from the road, steps up, and then it wedding takes back with two step backs, which was something that we came up with working in connection with your planner, Pratap. And the building has 57 condominium units. And I'd like to do now, it's the best way to see this is just to get in close. The building has a sort of like a garden, and it's designed around a cabana unit, which here is on the ground floor. There's a trellis over the top. And you're able to come off the beach, pass this garden, and then come into the main entrance where this trellis is. There is an amenity space on the ground floor facing the ocean. And there's an overhang on the apartments up above. So we have a covered patio in the front overlooking the beach. Looking from the northwest towards the east, you can see here on Ocean Boulevard, we have the berm that's required on the edge with a pedestrian path. And I'll be able to take you through the site. This is looking east. As you approach the site and you enter the drive, you would enter here. Parking would be on the right and in the garage. But you could see here, there's a visual cube that takes you straight to the ocean. So it frames your view towards the water as you come in. And there's a pedestrian path along the edge for the public, as well as one for the residents on the right-hand side. So you can see here, this is kind of like a garden, a flat green grass garden with landscaping. And the path is on the left. And here on the right is our cabanas. So you'll be able to come off the beach and enter into the cabana and leave your beach clothes, your surfboard, or whatever it is that you have right here down on the ground level. Each apartment will have one of these cabanas. Turning through the trellis, you get to see this is of the glass entrance, which will be the front entrance to the lobby. Then if you are on the pathway between the garden and the cabanas, which will be on your right, this is the pathway through. It takes you right down to the front of the building and the beach. And if you look into the cabanas, you see there are gates and there's individual doors. So you can leave your beach equipment right there. Now, once you get down to the end, there's a stairway here that comes up, takes you up to the main amenity level, which is up here facing east. And you can see our amenity space is here on the right. There's a fitness and a community room here on the right. Outdoor chairs and tables. And then to the left, of course, you could see the view to the beach. There you go. Looking back down, if you were to go back down to the beach, you come down the same stair. And you can proceed right out towards the road. So this is an overview, looking back at the building this way. The building has three different materials. There's a stone composite, there's metal panels, and then there's brick at the ground level. And I'll show you those materials in a minute. On the south side is where we have our outdoor amenities. You can see here, off the front deck, there is a fire pit here, which is tucked into the dunes overlooking the beach. There's an outdoor pool here and an outdoor deck. The deck is screened -- let me just turn it on. So the deck is screened by a overhead screen trellis to provide some cover and some separation and shielding from the building here on the left. What's new about this plan, since the last time we presented it to you, is that there is a terrace out here with a landscape buffer. And this will be heavily planted so that this would be screened from the building to the south. And this overhead trellis here would also help screen it from up above, looking down. So this outdoor deck area is accessible along the ground level, out of the amenity space here inside, and leads you to the pool. And it also takes you to this outdoor fire pit. Another aspect of the new plan, which is what we're showing tonight, is that this fence, which is necessary for code purposes to separate the pool, has been recessed down in a man-made berm in the sand dune in front of the building. So instead of looking up at the site and seeing the fence, it's sunk down, so it's hidden from view to create a more aesthetic view from Ocean Avenue. So looking at the west side, as you come in from the road here, you make the right turn. You enter into the garage here, and you enter in on the ground level parking. There are two levels of parking. The ground level parking is entered here. And if you park in the lower level, you come down this ramp and you enter into the garage just like this. There are 2.2 parking spaces per unit. There's a total of 128 parking spaces, of which 116 are inside. So here's another view if you were on the deck. Each one of these apartments, as you can see, has an angled deck so that they have views of the water. And you can see the view here from the window. And -- oh. So I'll just look back. You know what? Okay, so you're looking back here at the deck. You can see here, it's this simulated wood panel that we're showing in brown. The base of the building is a black-colored brick. And then there's a stone composite wall panel, which goes from the brick all the way up to the roof. If you're on the deck level here, you can see that it's designed to look over the pool and out towards the ocean. And here's another view if you're on the second floor, looking east. You can see the fire pit in the distance and then overlooking the ocean. So this would be a place where residents can gather and just have, you know, an evening conversation. Now, looking back from the beach side towards the building, you can see we have this man-made dune to create a natural scape up to the building. And this is what it feels like if you're on the sidewalk, looking back up. And you can see here, by sinking this fence down with the dune grass in front, it practically disappears, so you don't see it. And this is the other side, coming off the beach, off the main road, the sidewalk. This is how you would enter. You'd come right down through this trellis, past the cabanas, make a left into the main lobby, or go up these steps onto the amenity deck, which is up in here. One of the other changes we made to the building was an architectural suggestion by Pratap, the planner. And I'll describe that. He felt it was important to do a couple of things, which we incorporated into this new design. On the front of the building, we have this panel of stone, which has a very thick detail. If you look at the side of it, and I'll just spin it around here for you. You see how thick this is? It's not just a four-inch wall, it's more like a 12-inch wall. And it gives it a substantial depth and dimension. And then we have a bay window, which comes off these front units. And Pratap had asked us to put a reveal between them to separate this architectural element from this architectural element. So that's something that's new to the plan since the last time we presented it. And I'll spin it around. One of the other aspects of the plan that's new is that up on the rooftop, we screened the mechanical equipment. And we have an optional roof deck as well, with the elevator and stair that comes up into this little lobby, optional onto a roof deck that we're not certain that this is going to be part of the project, but we want to reserve the right for it. And then the mechanical equipment, and you can see the air conditioning units are all screened up here, so you don't see them. And they muffle the sound as well. Another architectural change, if you notice the side of this building, you'll see that there's a series of bays, bay one, bay two, bay three. And they all have an angled top, sort of to simulate the movement of a sail, let's say, or a ship. This last one, which had that top, Pratap felt it was important that this last corner was more anchored and different. So we eliminated the slope on the top, and we brought the stone element all the way down to the ground, instead of stopping at the brick. So that's a change that we made since the last meeting that we had, based on suggestions from Pratap. And this again is the view, coming off the beach, going down through the trellis, past this green garden and fountain as you enter. And you can see the dune up here on the left. So I have overview from the back. And if you were inside the building and you were to take a look outside the windows, we've designed the exterior elevations to maximize the glass and to provide all of the residents with the best views of the beautiful ocean that we have here. So on the deck, this is what it would look like if you were on the upper-level deck. You have a commanding view of the beach. And then the final view I have for you is looking from the beach, back at the building, towards Long Branch. The Pure Village is up here on the right. And this is the view of the building. And you can see the repeating forms of this triangular rooftop, trying to create a dynamic architectural effect.
Mr. Marchetti, I got to give you about five more minutes because we have a lot to cover.
Yeah.
And then the council may have questions.
Sure. So the next -- that was the end of the presentation on the 3D model. The next thing I wanted to do is just go through the materials with you. I mentioned that the base of the building was a black brick. This is an Endicott clay brick. I have the actual samples here mounted on a board, if you'd like to see those. Would you like me to pull those up? The brick will be used on the base of the building, as you saw in the model. And it'll have a black mortar, so it'll have a very monolithically colored. And this brick has a little bit of a sheen to it. It's not just a dull brick. If you see it in the sun, it shimmers a little bit. And it picks up on the metal panels. The metal panels is a zinc-colored metal panel, which is on the bay windows in the metal trim. And together, this black-and-white, or black-and-gray scheme works very well. And what I have here on the upper panel is the actual stone, which is the majority of the building, which is this here. High-density fiberglass cement. It's a simulated stone panel. It feels and it looks like stone. And it's up on the top of the building here. The metal trim is right in here, it's a zinc color. And the balcony pieces that you see in brown, this is a simulated wood material. Wood, as you know, probably wouldn't hold up very well on the oceanfront. So this is a simulated wood. So the color scheme is a black and white with wood. And I also have the floor plans, but I think that the model was most informative. You can see that there are units on either side. And each one of the units has its own balcony. So it's a double-loaded corridor, units on the north, units on the south. And the ones in the front of the building have due east views.
Council, any questions?
I like the idea. Thank you.
You're welcome.
John? Mary Drew? You think we're good?
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have an electrical cord there I need to pull out if you don't mind.
Okay. Give me a minute, will you?
Okay.
So the next group can sit down.
Michael?
Rory. Yes.
Can you leave that material board?
Dean? Dean, can they leave it in the table?
It's yours. Whatever you prefer.
Yes. Yes, it can be left here.
Pardon me, where would you like it?
Right here is good. Thank you.
Dean, good job.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for getting through there very quickly and efficiently.
Okay, the second thing we have this evening is a presentation on the blocks development. Who's going to be speaking?
Michael Monroe is the architect for the project.
Okay.
Mike, what do you want to work? Are you going to use the screen or are you going to use the boards? What are you going to do?
I'll stand up here.
Am I going to be in the way?
Thanks. Stay, stay, stay.
We were here before in July making a presentation. We are on a 3D model, having a repeating seven or eighteen loop. But we presented our project, and we wanted to show you a realistic model. But it feels like a walk-around building. It's okay. Thank you. Okay. Since our last time we had been here, we've added one more unit. We're 33 units now. We have 70 parking spaces. Overall, the project has remained basically the same. We've just made some refinements to what we had done before. So walking along the project, as you start going through, this is the view from the boardwalk. So what we were trying to do is, we're in a historic oceanfront, Victorian-style. And we wanted to create some spaces between the buildings and step back the mass of the building. So as you start walking through the project, we have a berm similar to the project that you just saw. It's not quite as high. This is the project directly to the north, to the project that you just saw. From a perspective, this is the next one we're going up. As you walk through, we've actually pulled parts of the building forward to create four-story mass and going up to the eight-story mass. And we've carved out spaces between the pieces of it. We have larger and smaller units. And that gives us a nice step back, we think. Rather than just stepping back a piece of the building, we're trying to create interesting spaces as you approach the building from both sides. So coming around to the entrance to the site, you drive in a private driveway. We have the center courtyard. We have the arbers that we talked about last time. You can see, when you drive around, you go through a secure parking garage. You park under the parking garage where you park in a guest space and you come right out. The amenities ever changed? Last time, we had one rooftop, ended up one rooftop amenity up top, which was a common area. We've actually increased it and enhanced it. We've added a small pool, an exercise multipurpose area, and a sun deck. And we moved it to the south end of the building on the seventh floor. The overall material set of the project, we have a material board over here. We have a stone base. It's going to be granite with a dark mortar. We have a simulated slate roofing material that we're going to use for our roofs. And we also have some metal roofing. And our siding is going to be hardy board type simulated, simulated shape type product. It's all heavy.
It's very heavy.
A real piece of granite on it.
It's a real McCoy.
A little walk-around roof.
Yeah, right.
And you can basically see from some of these aerials, as it loops around, we try to create open spaces, both energy drive-in, landscape areas, view corridors, carve-outs in the buildings, to kind of break the building up a little bit, massing-wise. And that's basically our overall concept. Pratap had some suggestions, like he has had for all of us. And we're -- some of these computer models, we have a lot of very fancy sloping roofs and curved shapes. The computer model doesn't like to do those that easily. But we have all those features, as we have in our original renderings. We've incorporated all those. And we've been slowly modeling all those and kind of blending all the roof shapes together. And that's basically our presentation we had here before. If you have any questions.
Thirty-two units now?
It was 32. We're actually 33. We had a common area up top. We made that a little bigger, and we rearranged the roof area. So the building didn't get taller. It's the exact same mass, the exact same size.
Can you break down, could you show us visually what would be villa? What is the condo? What is the beach house? And which is the oceanfront home?
Sure. Well, basically, out of the 33 units, you can see in this view right here, this is the four pieces of the building that comes towards the ocean. These are larger units. These are 4,500 to 5,000, 6,000 square foot units.
Or would they be three floors?
Yes, they're three floors. There's a parking level below.
So you're calling those the beach houses?
Yes. No. No, ocean. See, this is the oceanfront.
Oceanfront home.
And we've pushed them, we've pulled them away from the other main portion of the building. We're kind of connecting them through some sloping roofs. Then in the middle part of the building, we have basically four stories of units that are four per floor, about 2,000 square foot units. And then we have some larger units in there for two floors, and we have one penthouse.
So those are considered villas? Just, I'm sorry, I don't understand which ones. I'm looking at the presentation, but I just want you to point out which ones are. You refer to villa, you refer to beach house, you refer to, I just want to know which ones.
Yeah. Basically, these, like as you go around the model, there's four villas over on this side. There's actually two units for each one of these sections. You can go in on grade, and there's one unit. It's about 1,200 square feet. It has a nice patio area on the outside, so you can go through and you have exactly an ocean view from the bottom. Or you walk into one of these four tower elements, and that gives you a stair directly up where you take an elevator. And then you have a main level, which is up about elevation 36. You have a nice view of the water. And then you have floor above that, and then an attic floor above that. So it's really a two-and-a-half or three-story unit above a lower unit. So those are, we're calling the villas. And that's on the entrance side, we're calling the rear of the project.
So the four on the rear are villas?
Yes, the four on the bottom. And the ones above those are the beach houses.
Mr. Fusco?
Mr. Fusco.
Robbie.
Just identify them a little closer with your pen, so they can see, Michael. Just point to them.
We have, there are four lower units.
What are they? What are the lower units called?
Villas. Those are the villa units. So the terminology has changed a lot from the different.
So above the villas are going to be what?
Four beach houses.
That's a bit confusing, beach houses and oceanfront. But basically, there's a three-story portion on each side that's going to be on top of the one-story units.
And then the homes in the front, there's how many? Four homes? There's only four different?
There's four common areas there that are larger size, yes.
So four homes on the beach.
I want to know what this is.
That's that top unit that we added. We're modeling that that's going to be inside of a mansard roof. That's the upper unit.
That's the penthouse?
Yes.
The four homes on the beach side, are they detached from the center building?
Everything's attached. We were asked, they were, in our original renderings, we had smoking roofs that came right down and had them more attached. Working with Pratap, we'd actually pulled them apart a little bit to get some open air space between the different parts of the building. So we've actually pulled the massing forward a little bit and carved that out. And that gives us some really nice cross views. From that middle portion of the building, you're basically looking over these buildings. They're four stories, but the upper floors, you're looking between them. And you're looking between these roof shapes. There's a lot of open space and view between them. So they're actually separating their space between them, but the connection's actually pushed back, and they're actually offset. So they appear more detached than they are.
Mike, show them on this, just to. So the four buildings you have in the front are one, two, three, and four. They're all connected. And then the middle part is here. And then one, two, three, four in the back. And the four in the back have, you walk into the villa, and then you walk up one flight of stairs, and you're in a beach house that is two-and-a-half stories above the villa. So you walk in the villa here, and then you walk in this two villa. There's two villas here, two villas here, and then a beach house on top, and a beach house on top. And this unit has one unit here, one unit here, one unit here, and one unit here per floor. So this would have a view of the water this way. This would have a view of the water that way. This would have a view of the water that way. And this has a view of the water that way. And the units go full width to the back. So this would be one unit, and your unit would have both western views and eastern views.
Right. Most of those units have sunset and sunrise decks, which is kind of nice. And the partition walls run straight between them, run east-west. So we're trying to maximize the light and openness. And most of them have private decks from both sides. And we've gone through great lengths. And we have a lot of big buildings around us and a lot of dents in this area. We've tried to keep all the decks private and protect cross views from unit to unit. And I think we've done that with this project. This drawing we showed you last time in July, this represents the grade plane as you drive in. The four lower units are all on one flat. And then the parking, basically, under the entire building. And this series of arbers you see, start off in the front, kind of meander through the building alongside, kind of a nice architectural feature. The last project that you saw had them also. We think those colors are nice. You can grow plants on them. They make it very pedestrian scale for getting around a lot of larger-scale buildings. And we try to create that human scale going through the whole project.
Let me see. One other thing, the two elevators in the building are one here and one here. And so when you come off the elevator, you either come on this side, which is one apartment, or you come into this side, which is another. So you don't have a long corridor, but you have a private one side or the other. And on this side, you come off, and you have this is one apartment, and this is the other. And basically, what you have is 10 bedrooms on the back side, and then living on the front side. So one, two, three, one, two, one, two, and one, two, three bedrooms. So you have three bedrooms, and then two bedrooms. And then on the front side, towards the water, you would have your living areas.
We had to put more elevators in to accomplish that. We kind of created a nice private guest building. We go up to your floor, there's one or two doors right there. Gives everyone a nice sense of ownership of a place in the building. In this diagram, the green one just shows you, you cut a slice of the building on the first floor at the main level. You can see where everything attaches. And this was asked for a couple of months ago, but it's actually very similar to this. It really hasn't changed much since we first presented the project. We've just represented it in the 3D format. And it was a challenge to generate. It's a work in progress.
So in summary, just for your, to answer your question, four oceanfront houses, one, two, three, four. Four villas on the first floor from the back. But it'd need more residents.
But it's eight more residences in the back.
And then, and then on top of the villa is another house called the beach house.
Which is going to be separate residence.
That's right. So these will be eight units in the back. And four in the front is twelve. And then we have twenty-one units in the middle. So that's your thirty-three units.
And we have a real nice size, because of that, we have a real nice size range. We go all the way from ten, eleven, twelve hundred square feet. For the lower levels up above, we guess it's about three thousand square feet. We have a lot of two thousand square foot units. We have some up around four and five. We have a real good mix, which we think is, is a good healthy thing to have.
Any other questions?
No.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Interior board, you want back in the closet, right? You got to do that or?
Yeah.
Okay. This is the Honorable Genji's Transit Village Ordinance Revision with Dave Roberts and Carl Turner. Gentlemen, I can give you about ten minutes tops.
Okay.
Let me get out of your way.
I think you should, that'll be enough.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Dave Roberts from Major Consulting. Just give you a, kind of a quick overview of some of the changes that were made to, or that we're proposing to the Transit Village District Ordinance that was adopted about a year ago. We've had some activity in that area, which has caused us to revisit some of the provisions. And we've had the opportunity to review some initial changes with the, with the planning board concurrently with the fact that the township is, the city is also doing a housing element for some middle to the core. So there's been a couple of things done to the ordinance. Reduction in density, clarification of parking standards from the west side of the tracks to the east side of the tracks, based on the fact that, of some of the experience, some of the projects that we've seen come through. We've also added more specific standards having, having to do with parking and with the, with the density bonuses.
And type of housing.
And the, right, and the type of housing. As far as parking goes, there's, where there's an opportunity or a situation where the property may be too small to combat, to accommodate both the development and the parking, there's now a fifteen thousand dollar per space standard in the ordinance. So it's much more specific. It's not open-ended. More particularly on the bonus, we had initially had, in the core area, which was the old C two-zone along Third Avenue and some of the side streets, as well as the areas around the hospital that were high-density transition, we had allowed fifty as our base and sixty as our, with a bonus. We lowered that to forty as a base and fifty with a bonus. And we also said that in order to earn that bonus, you were going to either pay twenty-five thousand dollars per unit in lieu of a bonus, or you would be able to provide some improvements to the area. Well, one of the things we're trying to do in the Transit Village is provide some public improvements in terms of parks and, and pocket parks, things like that. We know that there's not a lot of public property there. We're trying to accommodate that in private development. So that is, that's been added. But in addition to that, the one thing that we discussed with the planning board and added into the ordinance when we met with them was to actually make affordable housing as a standard. But we wanted to control it so that we didn't get all affordable housing. So we have a minimum, we have a floor and a ceiling, ten percent minimum, twenty percent maximum. The twenty percent maximum is one of the new options that you can earn for the bonus. So if you, you would need to have ten percent affordable no matter what. And we, we start that by saying ten units or more. So you would not, you would not, you'd be exempt if you were under, if you were under ten units. But ten units or more, you'd have to provide one, if you had a ten-unit project, one would have to be affordable. If you wanted to earn the bonus in the only, only applicable in the core and in the high density now, because we've made that change, then you would, then you would be able to have to provide the twenty percent, but no more than twenty percent. And the twenty percent is kind of a co-a standard. So that gives us, that gives us some flexibility. Probably, other than that, the most significant change was, you'll notice the last page of your sample ordinance has a map change. Because we, when we first did this ordinance, we were, we were trying to get funding to create a pedestrian link between the Mar, the end of Morris Avenue and the platform so that we could facilitate pedestrian access from the west side of the tracks, which right now, as everybody knows, is cut off. We assumed that that would be in place when this ordinance was drafted. But what's happened is people are taking advantage of the, the density incentives, but there's, there's no relation to the train station. So one of the bonus projects that we added was providing that link so a developer potentially would pay for it. Because we haven't been able to get transit or DOT to help pay, to help pay for it. And that, the other possibility is that lieu, that twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars in lieu, if that generates a pot of money for improvements in the area, it could go to a project like that. So that would effectively allow us to create that pedestrian link. And in addition, in the meantime, we decided it would be better to lower the density in the, probably the southwest quadrant, which would be west of the tracks, north of Bath Avenue to the edge of the district, from high to low. The, the low density provisions would be your existing R5, which is what it was zoned before, which already allows one to four family homes and townhouses. But we, in addition to that, we added garden apartments pursuant to the garden department regulations, which I believe are capped at, I think like twelve acres or something like that. So in addition to the regulatory changes, there would be a map change as relates to this. And that would help tone down the density in that area, which is the most, it's the most remote portion of the district from the train station. And it's on the west side of the tracks where, until we get that link, we're not going to get that nexus between the higher density and the train station. So that really, I think, summarizes it in a nutshell. I hope that was under ten minutes.
Any questions?
I have a couple. Just out of curiosity, the pedestrian link that you're talking about, what's, that would be a bridge of some sort?
Well, we had initially proposed a grade crossing because that would be, that would fit within the, the budget of the grants that we were applying for. We tried two years in a row under the Safe Routes to Transit and Transit, New Jersey Transit itself was objecting to it because they don't want any more grade crosses.
The rail operations people are not in favor of a, a grade crossing.
So when you say, what do you mean by grade crossing?
Well, in other words, you would have to, there would be a gate, just like there is now.
You know how you, they come in from the east side, you set something up on the west side.
Right, same thing.
Carl, in his travels, has found two or three examples of much safer means of closing off those crossings than the, than the gate.
Like a sliding fence, things like that.
And we have taken that up. I've gotten some positive response from New Jersey Transit, but not the rail operations people. They are very focused in there. But I, I'm going to talk to the now available Department Transportation Commissioner, right hand, show him the, the suggestions Carl has come up with, which I thought were outstanding. And he asked them to take a look at it and they're going to come down and study it really, because that's vital to us to get that information. So that's, that's a work in progress.
What's their alternative?
Well, the, we had effectively proposed a route. We showed them graphics down Morris Ave through an easement. We'd have to get an easement. The restaurant owner was willing to give us an easement through there, half of the vacated Morris Street that runs, that basically runs into the wall on the west side. And then we would need an easement across the back of the Westwoods, the Westwood Building. And then to a point where we would then, we'd have to cut a, cut a gap in the wall, have the grade crossing. And then we were originally going to put a ramp in at the end of the platform, handicap ramp, because there's just enough room between the end of the platform and the machinery shed.
We'd still have to do that. The only alternative, if you can't do a grade crossing, is to go over or go under, both of which are extremely expensive. And transit's been getting cut left and right. Turnpike authorities knocking on five hundred million dollars, they're talking about the beds knocking on fifty million dollars. So they never had any money whenever we talked to them. They never had any money to fix the ceiling and the station. And I was banging them on that starting this summer. So, you know, we think our best bet is to go back and really try through Department Transportation and settle this way.
And then one of the things is if we, if we were able to raise money through this bonus, this in lieu payment on the bonus, and so that we could participate in the funding, that we'd have a lot more leverage to get them to put up some money.
You come to the table with a couple of dollars, you maybe have a little more.
The other thing I just wanted to ask you is, you mentioned that, you know, part of the reason for these revisions were that we were getting some plans that sort of dictated the changes. Can you give me an example of what was and the type of plan that you got that needed to change?
Yeah, well, the first one was the, the first one was the archdiocese project, which was at that initial, not only was it, they, did they go for the bonus, but there was a provision that we changed that said that you could spread the bonus, you could spread the density out over non-contiguous parcels. And they had the convent, I guess, property, and then they had the church property on opposite sides of the street. So they, they were able to effectively treat it as if it was one parcel, even though they were on two, two different sides of the street. We've taken that out. So, and we've also required them, that, required anything on the west side has to have parking on the same site that the building is at. Whereas on the east side, we're allowing more flexibility, where you can provide parking on a, within, you know, across the street, on a, on a separate parcel. And also, that's where the in lieu, that the fifteen thousand dollar per space comes in if you don't have enough parking on your site. But on that side of the tracks, we want them to provide everything onsite and parking with the building so that we don't, we got, basically got overbuilt, I think, in that application. And there's been some interest in some of the other areas on the west side for much bigger projects than the neighborhood really wants. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Carl, what's your, what's your timing on this as far as?
Soon as possible.
So I'll work with you in the next week to get the ordinance amendment together, and then it could be potentially come to you at the first meeting in December for introduction, and the second meeting could be like here.
And the planning board's already provided your, that we've already incorporated their comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Last thing on the workshop is review of the regular meeting agenda. Just to let you know that ordinance fifteen fifteen is being called. That will not be presented tonight. And resolution two seventy-four fifteen will also be removed.
Is there a boardwalk update?
We're going to, oh, sorry, I skipped that. We have a boardwalk update?
Good evening. The boardroom is progressing, not, not a lot of change visibly since the last meeting. However, the water line is, I think, is completed except for the laterals that have to be tied into the businesses and structures that are there. The main structural component is completed up to Morris Avenue. Now we just have to do the decking, and that's up to, I was there a couple of days ago. I don't think he's up to, just shy of that. Shy of that, just a little bit shy of that. Railing, they've added some railing, but they're a little bit back on that to, you know, move up as they move along. All the light posts are up, all the light heads are on. And they're, you know, other than that, they're just moving along at a steady pace.
Could you just bring the council up to date on the problems we're having with the residents and visitors who want to walk on the boardwalk already?
The, the contractor's been notified, there's a meeting tomorrow between the engineer, the contractor, and our police department to go over the security measures, particularly for this weekend, because it is a long weekend. The weather should be nice and people are, you know, they're, and a lot of them are entering from the beach side, going up the steps. So he's going to have to be notified, he's going to have to secure that area. And the fencing is just tied with wire, and that's got to be secured a better manner. He was notified for that. So the onus of burden is on the contractor and, you know, if somebody gets hurt, I mean, it's going to be both of us, I would assume, you know, so.
And we did put it on the webpage today. It's on the front of the webpage that no one is allowed on the boardwalk for safety reasons. Because it's, it's become a, a pretty severe problem. They're just anxious.
So you're going to have a police presence now on the boardwalk the entire weekend? Is that, is that what I read this, this?
I don't, I don't think so.
They have had some police down there, right?
Yeah, I think we'll serve a day.
Station down there?
We have some people there.
Either weekend?
As much as we can.
We will have the police officers there over the weekend.
Okay. Whatever you say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That's the, that's the public.
Okay. And I'll just repeat, the ordinance is polled, resolution two seventy-four fifteen is polled.
Two seventy-four and seventy-five?
Two seventy-four fifteen. Two seventy-five is there. Just two seventy-four. The resolution accepting deed notice on the local association.
And two seventy-five is related to the two seventy-four, right?
No. Two seventy-five is the Green Acres, Matt has a question.
Right. Two seventy-four.
They are related to the same project. These are, but they're, they are two independent resolutions. The reason we asked to pull resolution R two seventy-four dash fifteen is we want to make sure, since this is a redo of a deed notice that was accepted years ago, that the lot and blocks are right. Okay? And I don't want to confuse anybody with that. So that's where we want to pull that one.
Two seventy-five is the Green Acres ramp here. That's a little different.
But it is providing the same area.
Oh, it's down in the park here. We're trying to do some improvement.
But it's not, it's not contingent, one's not contingent.
Absolutely not, no.
It's on the same property, but it's a different action. It'll need the, the separate action.
Okay. I need a motion to close.
Hold on. Second?
All in favor? I need a motion to adopt a resolution to go into executive session for the following items.